I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Miller, could you please call the roll?
Chairman Di Maria.
Here.
Vice Chairman Albrecht, Mr. Bushnell, Mrs. Kiefer.
Here.
Mrs. Purdy.
Here.
Mrs. Sebeski.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Ms. Maddock.
Here.
Ms. Torres.
Here.
Dr. McGorick, do we have additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, we do. We have a personnel addendum, a budget transfer, school board minutes to add to the consent agenda, and a closed session's been added at the end of the meeting.
Thank you very much. And we'll move on now to superintendent's announcements and spotlights. And while we do this, Vice Chairman Albrecht is traveling on business. I'm very sorry he can't be here. I will accept for him. And Mr. Bushnell had his first round. He is doing very well. Everything is fine. He had his first round of chemo today. He planned to be here, but it just took too much out of him, so he's not going to be here tonight. But he's doing fine, and he will be fine. But he just couldn't make it here tonight. Okay. Ms. Rafter.
Thank you, Chairman Di Maria, Dr. McGorick, other members of the board. Good evening to you. Good evening to everyone who has joined us tonight. We have some very special presentations, and I'm very honored to be able to present some of our students tonight who have done some preparations that I think we are all going to enjoy. February has been designated as the month-long observance of School Board Appreciation, which is sponsored by the Virginia School Boards Association. The theme of this year's celebration, Turning Vision into Results, reflects the top priority of local school board members as they advocate for public education with local, state, and federal leaders. Each school in the division has prepared a special presentation for each school board member. They will share their presentation in the following order: Baldwin Elementary School for Mrs. Purdy, Dean Elementary School for Mrs. Sebeski, Hayden Elementary School for Mr. Williams, Round Elementary School, Mr. Bushnell, Weems Elementary School, Mr. Albrecht, Mayfield Intermediate and Metz Middle Schools for Mrs. Kiefer, and Osborne High School for Mr. Di Maria. They will come in that order.
Good evening.
We are very excited to be here, and I have brought some friends with me. We have Cheyenne Carter from first grade, we have Giselle Reyna from second grade, Alexis Caligos from second grade, Ada Husband from third grade, and Noe Aguilar from fourth grade. And we have some things that we would like to present to Ms. Purdy. Yes, please. The first item that we have is from our pre-kindergarten. And our theme all year has been building the future. And we do appreciate all that the school board is doing to help Manassas City build the future for our students. Our next presentation is from Davon Carter, a third grader. He is showing what kindergarten is presenting. Next, we have Cheyenne Carter from first grade, showing off their artistic ability for the new Baldwin.
Oh, my. Look at this. It says yay. And then this one's got a clock in here through. Oh, my goodness. I think my favorite is the Beehive on this one.
Next, we have Giselle Reyna from second grade, presenting thank you cards.
Thank you very much. Very, very creative, and I really like color.
And we have Ada Husband, third grade, presenting poems.
Oh, and this looks like a very romantic poem.
Okay, she'd like to read her poem.
Great. Future. Fabulous work. Unending hard days. Teamwork under a lot of pressure. Ready and prepared for each day. Establish great things.
Nice. Very, very nice.
And we have Noe Aguilar that has a thank you letter he would like to present.
Dear Ellen, Ms. Purdy, thank you for hiring Ms. Schroeder. She's a great teacher. Thank you for making Baldwin a great place to be. Thank you for keeping us safe and making sure we learn what we need to learn. Thank you for helping our school be a better place. And thank you for thinking of our new school, Baldwin Intermediate. I think it was a great idea for a new school. Go Rockets!
Thank you. You guys did a wonderful job. Beautiful reading, lovely artwork, and I really, really like the Go Rockets name.
Mrs. Sebeski, can you come down front, please? Might just stand right here. Jenny Dean Elementary School wants to thank you for your service to our community, and I now present to you Jenny Dean Elementary.
We're results, we're results. We're looking for the vision. We're results, we're results. We have to use our strength. We have to find the vision. Today we're worthy of something. We're results, we're results. We're looking for the vision. We're results, we're results.
I think I have a name.
Are you sure?
I heard she is part of the vision.
This is, it's Miss Kamala Sebeski.
We want to thank Ms. Sebeski. We wanted to thank you now. Thank you for the vision. We are your big results. We're results, we're results. We're looking for the vision. We're
Let us tell you a story. From the court of Jenny Dean, it has written reason. What's such a wonderful scene? Once upon a time, no, actually, all the time. Our school is full of fun. If I didn't know any better, I think we charged the same.
It's all of our energy. With everything we learn, it's definitely our vision that's given us our turn.
We're results, we're results, we're results.
As a result of your vision, I love your books. As a result of your vision, I'm good at writing and I love to read.
As a result of your vision, I am good at spelling.
As a result of your vision, I can do 300 math problems in two days.
As a result of your vision, I love science. I know the entire periodic table, and I'm almost done reading the Harry Potter books.
Thank you, Ms. Sebeski. We want to thank you now. Thank you, Ms. Sebeski. We want to thank you now. Thank you for the vision. We are your big results. We're results, we're results. We're looking for the vision. We're results, we're results.
Thank you, Ms. Sebeski. We want to thank you now. Thank you, Ms. Sebeski. We want to thank you now. Thank you for the vision. We are your big results. We're results, we're results. We're looking for the vision. We're results, we're results.
Thank you, Ms. Sebeski. We want to thank you now. Your vision lets us answer all the questions. After nearly eight years of service, what many decisions made, from all your perspectives, we're surely, you've surely made a grade. All of your meetings and the giving of your time surely made us clear as our lives were surely marked.
Thank you for the vision. As the turn of results, our learning of all this lead us as adults and adults.
Thank you, guys. Thank you all so much.
You all did such a great job, and you're right. I've worked every part because I want all of you to have a great teacher and all kinds of awesome teachers. So, thank you for working hard and all the great things. That's so wonderful. There's a great thing that all of you are doing. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Williams. Could you come on down and meet our friends? Not many people know the incredible work that school board members put in each and every day at work. They have their own jobs. And so, all of you are amazing for taking the time to really both look forward and look back at some of the things that you've done. And you have touched these students, Mr. Williams. I have Anaya, I have Gabri, I have Andrew hiding here, and Ms. Dasha. And they were all touched by a visit you made to their classroom. So, those little things that you do are snapshots they'll remember. And I have Gabri. They're going to read, Gabri and Anaya are going to read a letter that they crafted for you.
Dear Mr. William, thank you for coming to reach for us. I think you are a hard worker. Thank you for supplying the schools with transportation and other supplies. Thank you for the security of our school.
It's amazing how much the school board does for all the schools. I probably wouldn't have known all this cool information if you didn't come. So, thank you.
I would be proud if I was a part of the school board, so I hope you are proud too. Sincerely, Gabri.
Yes. So, I wish we had a show. But we do have, of course, these flowers were all crafted by the children, and they're there for you to celebrate and remember all of the things that you do, the little lives that you touch each and every day. And for that, we thank you. Right? What do you guys all say? All the thank you cards for all the
Good evening. We are here to honor Mr. Bushnell. He's not here, but so we're going to present this to all of you. I have with me members of our SEAR, Student Council Association, who are going to say a few nice words. They are very influential in our building, providing leadership to our other students, and very much like the leadership you provide us, and that we trickle on down to our students. So, we have Hannah, Nina, Audrey, and Darlene here. So, take it away.
Round Elementary would like to thank Mr. Bushnell for his many
Many.
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 Years, for years of service to our school board.
He is a true professional and always cares about what's best for us kids. Our school made some thank you notes to show our appreciation.
We also have Round Rock and gift bag full of school spirit goodies for him. And we also made that poster up there.
With turning vision into results, our future will be so bright, we need shades.
Come on, put them on.
Good evening, school board. We had a hard time getting past the great results of there, so we thought we'd come down this side. Good job, Jenny Dean. Our school board member is Mr. Scott Albrecht, but I noticed that he is missing. So, accepting for Mr. Scott Albrecht, I hope will be the chairman, Mr. Tim Di Maria. Would that be all right? Just so we're not presenting to, at random. And I am not going to introduce my children because I think it's more important that you meet the faces of two of our teachers at Weems Elementary. First of all, I would like to introduce one of our kindergarten teachers, Ms. Samantha Mullin, and one of our third grade teachers, Ms. Kristen Stevens. And these young women have done a fabulous job getting results out of their children and putting them in a way to present to Mr. Albrecht at this time. So, I'm going to turn it over to them to introduce the students and show you the results of some of the great work that is happening in their classrooms.
Hello. So, this is me and Ms. Stevens' second year of being a buddy reading class. So, all of her students come to my class, and they read to the kindergarten students. So, it was my vision for my kindergartners to learn how to read, not just from adults or teachers, but from also their peers as well. And they love it. They ask every day if Ms. Stevens' class is coming.
Hi. And it was my vision, buddy reading with Sam's class, to teach my third graders to see themselves as leaders and role models, not just for reading, but for just being a good student overall. And so, we really appreciate all that you do to help us turn our vision into a reality. So, we have with us Kaylee from third grade and Gabriel from first grade, and they just have a little something to
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten, sorry. They just have a little something to share. Can we use this?
For making our school a better place to learn. Thank you so much for being a positive role model. Thank you so much for helping us reach our goals.
So, our classes collaborated together to make a giant thank you card for Mr. Albrecht. It just includes some writing that they worked on together that said how they benefited from buddy reading with each other and what they've learned and how they've enjoyed working together. So, thank you.
And we've got a picture of Mr. Albrecht on the front. Don't wipe that ball or short, but still, I'll make sure that he gets this. And your uniform looks great. Congratulations, you guys. You did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. These Mayfield bobcats are here this evening to honor Mrs. Kiefer. Now, I have to tell you that right now, you're a bit of a local celebrity at Mayfield Intermediate School. Everyone here might not know that about a week ago, Mrs. Kiefer made her broadcast debut on our Friday morning broadcast. And not only do we think she's a great school board member, but we also realized she had some great talents in front of the camera as well. So, Lee would like to thank you for joining us that morning for our broadcast. I'd like to present to you Lee Tedford, Kylie Donovan, Haley Comerford, Hady Velazquez, and Nolan Theodore. And we are going to present to you some letters that we wrote, and then we have a few items we'd like to present you with.
Nope.
Oh, right here. That's right. I just watched that happen.
Dear Mrs. Kiefer, Team One of our Broadcast Club would like to thank you for providing and approving the budget for Manassas City Public Schools. The money allows us to participate in activities at school like Broadcast Club. The money also provides the technology we have here at Mayfield, and without it, we would not have Broadcast. The budget also provides transportation. If you didn't provide it, we couldn't go from school to home after our after-school programs. Thank you for providing extra programs we can participate in. We can have a better college applications and a better variety of jobs when we grow up. From Ms. Truly, Alyssa Northern, Hady Velazquez, Ariana Young, Madeline Hosglau, Kayla Concos, and me.
Dear Mrs. Kiefer, thank you for approving the Manassas City Public School budget. As you do this, you supply us with many school programs. You also supply us with after-school programs, building repairs and maintenance. After-school activities are very important to our students. Students love playing basketball, volleyball, and even soccer. This allows kids to socialize and have some fun after school. This also allows students like us to be in Broadcast Club. Building repairs and maintenance are also very important. Without the school board paying for the repairs, the ceiling might just be falling apart. Without maintenance, the floor would be filthy, the lights wouldn't work correctly, and the air conditioning wouldn't work as well as it does now. Sincerely, Nolan Theodore, Kylie Donovan, and Connor Higbee.
Dear Ms. Kiefer, thank you for your service in the school board. I really appreciate the music programs at Mayfield. I play the flute and have a wonderful teacher. Thank you for providing money for the music programs. The school wouldn't be the same without them. I also appreciate the technology at the school. The computers allow us to type up essays, learn new things, and take tests. The iPads allow us to explore in a different way. Thank you for your service in the school board. It is greatly appreciated. With gratitude, Fionette King. Okay. And now Haley would like to present you with a drawing that she created. And this represents how your hand touches the students in all of our schools. Nolan would like to present you with a banner from our sixth grade students. And Lee would like to present you with a little basket of goodies from Mayfield. And in there, don't worry, is a copy of the CD of your broadcast debut at Mayfield Intermediate School.
Thank you, guys. I do this because of you, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so you get two of us. And we kind of have a secret weapon. We got to have your
daughter. So, she helped us with lots of really good stories to kind of make a fun poem to appreciate you. And we also have a survival kit for our school board members. So, we'll read a little bit about that in a minute. So, here's the poem, "All For You." Before congrats goes out to the newest member of the board, your daughter was nice to share some stories on your accord. Like the time of your first meeting when nothing bad was said, as you failed to see the microphone on light above your head. Or the other head incident when you had a construction hat that saved you from the boomwhack of Metz Orchestra Bat. Funny thing is rumor has it, you stated that event was so fun, even though your daughter was the guilty whack-a-mole one.
What about your video pics that have some hidden location of your OMG mom dance moves at the staff complication? Luckily, no one has yet come across them posted online, as I'd have to answer, whose mom is that without mine? Oh, and hope your broadcast advice doesn't fumble with the Mayfield students you saw as Junior Bryant Gumbel. But as now, your actions represent more than one little girl, they shine brightly for MCPS like a newly appointed pearl.
So, thank you. And because this is your first year, we thought a survival kit would be appropriate. So, I will let you know what's inside of here. We have batteries to keep you going, bubble wrap for stress relief, a rubber band to stretch that budget, erasers to fix all the little mistakes, Band-Aids to help with the district's problems, bubbles to remind you to have a little fun, extra gum to help you go that extra mile, crayons to color each of your days bright, a candle to remind you to keep shining, to keep helping our students' bright futures, lifesavers for when you have one of those days, and a gold star to remind you to keep shining and that you do make a difference. So, thank you for all that you do. On behalf of Osborne High School, we would like to honor Mr. Tim Di Maria this evening. And so, when we were giving this some thought, we thought to be relevant, and the most appropriate way we could do this is to write you an original rap. And so, we've done that. And Mr. Jeffrey Johnson, the author, is also going to perform it now. He's a junior at Osborne.
How's everybody doing?
Good for now.
All right. So, can we give a round of applause to all the schools again real quick? All right. So, Tim, you're a pretty cool guy. See, what I was gonna do, I was gonna make a speech, try to get the facts and everything, but I didn't want the facts. I wanted personality. So, I went around and I asked some of your friends and some who aren't too fond of you. And I have put together the Tim Di Maria rap. Yo, Tim Di Maria, he's one heck of a guy. He graduated as an eagle, so we must be fly. Now, I know you all think Tim's one of the rest, but let me tell you the reasons why the chairman's the best. Not only was he an eagle, but he's also a fan. See, a spirit so big that it fills up the stands. And if you heard his voice, then you just might fear him because he cheers so loud his own wife won't sit near him. When it comes to football, his voice gives off a boom. And when a free throw was made, he's the loudest in the room. He's the good old boy type with no stress or no tensions. But if he wasn't your boss, Ms. Miss Benner would give him detention. Not because he was trouble, just to settle him down, because it takes a lot of focus with his role in the town. Most of you only see the business side, the charisma and charm, but when he's not growing our schools, he's planting his farm. Side note, he is the sidefather Facebook. Look him up. Sidefather. Despite his title, Tim doesn't sit around. He's always on the move trying to better the town. He cares for the kids as they were all his own. As long as Tim has the chair, the kids are never alone. He's gotta stay balanced from work into fun, but at the end, on top, his family's number one. Since 2006, we watched as Tim grown, so now I think it's time we turn that chair into a throne. So, Tim, this is your throne, and I gotta be honest, real quick. Behind all the suits and tights, there's a guy that really cares. So, all of us here are grateful that you still have the chair. So, thank you, Tim, for supporting all the sports in the classes because you're leader of the whole world. Well, the school is a Manassas.
Thank you to all of our students. Those were wonderful presentations. If we could have every one of you come down front, our school board members are gonna come down, we're gonna take a really nice, great picture together, group picture. So, everybody come on back up here. Everybody come on back. Board members, if you don't mind coming on down.
I'm thinking just across here. Yep, just across here. But you all come on up here.
Oh.
All right, here we go. Everybody ready?
Just everybody. Everybody look that way.
One, two, three. One more, one. Nice smiles, two, three. Oh, hold on. There's a little girl behind you, I can't see her. One in a stripe. There we go. One, two, three. Perfect. Everybody else?
Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you, parents.
All right, can we hold up one second? Can I have everybody's attention for a second here? Can I have everybody's attention? Hank, you guys can stay right there. You look good, right up here, okay? We deeply appreciate this, and the fact that you are supporting us is great, but this is better for us, not because you're presenting stuff to us, but just because you're presenting. These kids are absolutely fabulous, and we are all touched because of the work that our staff has done and how wonderful our children are. And one other thing, last week was also board clerk appreciation, and we didn't have a meeting last week, so I want everybody to be in here. I was class of seventy-nine, was so well put out and pointed out, and Ms. Lee Schultz-Miller was class of seventy-eight. Kristen Kiefer, Kristen, change your name, Kiefer, is our clerk of the board, and she went to serve her country. Clapper. Clapper. No, but what's her?
Carrie Kline.
Kline, Kline. But she went to serve her country and on short notice, and Ms. Miller stepped in and has taken over the clerk board, the board clerk position admirably, better than we could have ever expected. Without her, I don't know, I really, honestly, you say this about a lot of people, I don't know where we would be. She stepped up, she does her regular job at central office in finance, which is enough, easily enough, and then she does this, and she's with us all of these nights, giving up time at home to be here, and can I get a round of applause for Ms. Miller?
Yeah, now you can all leave.
It's two XL. I nearly gave you this. She must have thrown this on her desk while I was down there. Here you go, Lee, congratulations. That's all right.
Thank you so much for putting this all together.
Thank you, brother. I will see you soon. Okay, while everybody is exiting, if they all want to exit, we're gonna go with board committee reports. Mr. Williams, is there anything on academics?
No report.
Ms. Spesky, policy?
Yes, Mr. Chair, just briefly, I will be sitting with some staff to get the VSBA update on March the fifteenth. This is the review that we go through two to three times a year, and after that, we'll be setting up a meeting with the policy committee.
Thank you. And I don't believe Mr. Albrecht or Mr. Bushnell had anything, and nobody else knows of anything. Okay. And now that it's nice and quiet, we'll go on to board member comments. And Ms. Torres, we'll start with you, if you have anything.
Yes. I have a message to all our fellow seniors. I saw the March Scholarship Newsletter just came out, and the MCPS Education Foundation scholarships are up, and I saw there was a little bit for everyone, so I suggest you guys, check it out, consider applying, and yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Maddox?
Thank you. Well, first of all, I need to say thank you to all my board members for doing such a great job, and this is my first year helping out on the board, and I have learned so much just from the meetings and just so much, like I have a whole different perspective of the school system because I really understand what you guys are going through, and I'm not getting half of it, so thank you. And I also wanted to say that at Osborne, we just finished doing course registration for next year, and it was our first year totally digital, so just like we're doing, we're getting results with our vision. And we are moving into spring sports, so that's really exciting. This was our tryout week, and so all this week will be tryouts for all spring sports, and then we'll get into that, so it should be a fun rest of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kiefer?
Thank you. First, it goes without saying, I just wanted to thank everyone who put in such effort to recognize us tonight. It really is not about us, it's about everybody else that was up there. Those kids mean everything to all of us in every decision we have to make, no matter how hard it can be sometimes, so thank you. And I mean it when I say that broadcast team at Mayfield, they're pretty rockin'. I mean, I was really nervous, so I'll get some lessons from them. So, thank you especially to Mayfield and to Mets for your recognition, and if you want to stay and help me carry all this stuff to the car, that would be great, too. So, and I just wanted to say, you know, sometimes in budget season, we get lost in all the decisions that have to be made and all of the things that are swirling around. And so, I just want to take a moment of, I have an attitude of gratitude lately, and I just want to look around the system and say thank you to everybody, not only who's here, but those who aren't here. I want to say thank you to the parents, to our children, to the staff, to all the support that goes into this school, to my fellow board members and liaisons, to the teachers, of course, administration, to everybody. Just look around and think about how grateful we should be for what we have, and how grateful we should be for all of the things that we all look to aspire to become. So, thank you for that, and thank you to everybody who does so much.
Thank you. Ms. Purdy?
So, I too wanna, I'm just kind of grinning, thinking about other things that the kids did this afternoon. There was a lot of creativity, a lot of talent that was shown in the artwork. I do have to say something to Fionette about the fact that she mentioned she's learning to play flute, so I just wanted to call that out. And I wanted to thank Baldwin. Interestingly enough, last weekend, I was cleaning out my daughter's closet, and I found her little shirt, and it had handprints on it, so that one poster was particularly meaningful. Last week, we had a budget work session, and so I want to commend the staff. One of the things that we have been sorting our way through, if you recall what we discussed here in the city hall last week, we had some concerned parents talked about, you know, what were the implications for the changes that we're making to CTE, the implications for changes that we're making to providing social services and such. And when we had our discussion last week, the staff members really came up with some out-of-the-box thinking for how can they respond to those parents' concerns, a way for them to continue moving forward with the vision so that we can upgrade our CTE program, get to industry standard, as well as keep in mind the students that are currently in the midst of the programs. And so, they came up with some interesting ideas for how they can work with students individually, look at ways to continue to provide curriculum through online types of training. And so, it was kind of nice to see that as they were figuring out how to implement going forward, they were not forgetting that we currently have a program, we have kids in that program, and they found a very, very creative, and I thought, very innovative way to try to figure out how to keep serving those that are in the midst of things. So, I do want to thank them for that, and it occurs to me that maybe some more of that out-of-the-box thinking is exactly how we can sort through continuing to provide the services that the parents were concerned about with regards to the social worker, so that we can gently transition out of the old model and into the new model and keep everyone served at a high level. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you. Since Mr. Albrecht and Mr. Bushnell aren't here, I have a bunch of stuff to say, so take up more time. First, I'd like to thank the students and the staff for the presentations, especially Haley, that was awesome. You all did a great job, and we really appreciate it. What we do is for the kids and for this community, and that is the result, the vision. So, we thank you and we appreciate it. So, thank you again. Now, to my comments. First, congratulations to Lucky Whitehead on having his jersey number twenty-two retired by Osborne, and congratulations to his mom, Karen Morris, and his family, including Robin and Mike Johnson. Thanks to the OHS staff that organized the program, and the MCPS coaches, staff, students, and community that support him. Lucky's obviously a great athlete, but he's an even better person. He's a role model for a lot of people and is loved and admired by many folks here in his hometown. I'm very proud of him, we are all proud of him, and I wish him continued success in his future. Next, congratulations to the Osborne Theater Department for the production of The Crucible. It poignantly and aptly captured the essence of the play, especially the dangers of group think accompanied by a lack of diligence and critical thinking. The kids were awesome, and if you didn't catch it, make sure you try to catch the next production because they did a really good job of capturing what the play was all about. Congratulations to all the winter sports teams at OHS and the spring sports teams that have tried this week, as Faith mentioned, and good luck to the boys and girls basketball team as they continue their seasons. A number of OHS students participated in district chorus this past Saturday at Garfield High School. They missed most of school Friday, which I'm sure they didn't mind, and they took a good part of Saturday, and then they had a performance where they performed varying from, I think, four to six songs, depending on the group, and they were phenomenal. They represented the school very well in District Nine, you should be proud of them. We do a ton of things that people don't know about, and the music department is another one of those things people don't see, and they did a great job, so congratulations to them. Congratulations to the Mayfield Vex Robotics Team for their stellar performance at a state competition this past weekend. And segueing to Osborne, please come out Friday night, seven o'clock, Friday the twenty-sixth. If you want to be entertained, come see the Osborne Talent Show. These kids are insanely talented. Hopefully, some of these young ladies up here are gonna participate, lip sync maybe? Gonna, you gonna attend? I'm sure they'll be there cheering their classmates, but the talent show is great. And one great thing about the talent show is not just the talent of the kids, but camaraderie in the school spirit. It's very rare where you find in a high school environment where kids uniformly cheer each other no matter how they perform, and the kids get up there, do their best, and they really support each other. So, if you can come out and support the kids Friday night, it's really great. Also on Friday night, Mets is holding its rescheduled Black History Month program at five o'clock at Mets, so if you have a chance, please stop by. And the Mets program on Friday is a nice segue to my final topic, Black History Month. Black History Month is celebrated in February, and I'd like to take a few minutes to discuss it. Harriet Tubman, astronauts Ronald McNair, Mae Jemison, and Stephanie Wilson, Benjamin Bannaker, W.B. DuBois, Madame C.J. Walker, Phyllis Wheatley, Rita Dove, Booker T. Washington, Crispus Addicks, who's widely considered to be the first African-American casualty and the first American casualty in the American Revolutionary War, Dr. Charles Drew, Jesse Owens, Frederick Douglass, President Barack Obama. These are just a few of the many important people and the annals of Black History in America. The primary purpose of Black History Month is to celebrate the contributions of African-Americans to America. These contributions range from science, to medicine, to architecture, to religion. They're significant and invaluable aspects of American history. Learning about accomplishment by individuals and groups better informs our understanding of Black History and American History. Black History Month is also a reminder that most successful African-Americans, like most successful Americans, are not athletes or entertainers. Too often, we in this society have that opposite impression, which unconsciously steers kids into thinking they have limited vehicles for success, while reinforcing dangerous stereotypes that are harmful to us all. These contributions also serve to remind us of the great value of diversity, in this instance, racial diversity, in our schools, in our communities, in our society. This past Saturday, my wife, who's here in the audience, hey, honey, and I had the fortune of listening to a talk by Stephanie Wilson in Washington, DC. Stephanie is the second African-American woman astronaut to go into space. Mae Jemison is the first. Stephanie has flown on three shuttle missions. She spoke about the incredible views up in space, the camaraderie she established with other astronauts, and the many experiments she performed in space. What struck me most about her talk was her passion and the hard work and precision required for her to become an astronaut. She told one young student in the audience that it did not matter if you were valedictorian in your class, through hard work, you could be successful. She told another that her experience as an astronaut was greatly aided by Mae Jemison and Sally Ride, women astronauts who had gone before her, inspired her, and paved the path for her to follow. Stephanie is a living testimony that perseverance, hard work, and the support of those around you can help propel you to achieve great things. I love that Stephanie mentioned some of her inspirations because we too often forget to celebrate and appreciate our past. We are, for better or for worse, a microwave society. We won everything yesterday. We live in the here and now. If you ask somebody under thirty-five who the greatest basketball player ever is, they'll say LeBron James or Michael Jordan, saying he won six titles. Now, with Mr. Bushnell and Mr. Albrecht were here, because then they could kind of weigh in also, but they have forgotten about players like Kareem Abdul-Jabbar, who won six titles, not to mention Bill Russell, who won eleven, and Jerry West from West Virginia. six titles, not to mention Bill Russell, who won 11, and Jerry West from West Virginia, and Dave Statch like that, too, who is the logo for the NBA. The same holds true in other walks of life. In politics, many young people are currently feeling the burn and touting Trump, but there was similar energy for President Kennedy years ago, and I bet George Washington had a colonial fan club. This also holds true for singers. Taylor Swift and Beyonce followed Whitney and Mariah. And for boy groups, 1D, I'm not sure if you guys are 1D fans or not, but I know a lot of my daughter's friends are. 1D's cool, and my daughter reminds me every other day, they're not broken up, they're in hiatus, you know, so they're not broken up. But before them were the Beatles, and also the Jackson 5, and the Motown Sound. I could go on and on, but you get the idea. What's happened in the past informs the future. Speaking of the past, on Sunday, I finally saw the movie Race, which is about Jesse Owens in the 1936 Olympics. It premiered nationwide last weekend. I say finally because my wife and I were invited to a screening of the movie by a very good friend of ours, a few weeks ago at the museum, but because of our commitments, we couldn't make the the screening. The friend who invited us, Marlene, is an attorney, and she's a very good friend of mine, and she also happens to be Jesse Owens' granddaughter. A few weeks ago, I asked her what she thought of the movie after the screening, and if it was accurate, and if it portrayed her grandfather in the light that she thought it should. She told me that it was powerful and it was true, and after seeing it, I agree. And I urge you all to go see it. Too often, we kind of forget what happened in our history, and that was not that long ago, and to see what he went through was just unfathomable on one hand and incredibly inspiring on the other. Under unimaginable pressure, in dealing with racism at home and Nazi Germany abroad, Jesse Owens' performance in the 1936 Olympics brought glory not just at Black Americans, but to all of America and all that America stands for. He's revered in Europe to this day. He exhibited an uncommon grace, strength, and courage, traits which everyone can learn from. Don't worry, I'm almost done. Finally, we have Black History Month to learn, to comprehend, and to be inspired. The inspiration, though, is not just for Black Americans, we should not forget that, it's for all Americans. We all can learn, we all can be examples, we all can aspire, we all can be great, we can change the world. And in fact, one thing that I love is that the staff who's here now and the staff who's here earlier and the ones we don't see, they do that every day, and I thank you for that. As Shakespeare said, "The past is prologue," meaning the past paves the way for the future. My prayer is that the panoply of African-American experiences we celebrate today, which helped create the rich fabric of American society, will inspire all Americans and serve as a foundation for an equitable, dynamic, and even better tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Good luck, Mrs. Sebeski. Follow that.
Well, I won't even pretend to try. I I will echo everyone else's results and comments in that I really, really appreciate all the effort that the school's put into tonight's recognition. It really, I think I speak for everybody, it's not about us, it's about these kids, and especially during budget cycle like it is right now, it's so wonderful to have had them all here, and it really focuses you back to what we do all of this for and what I have done this for, for so many years. It is about our youth, it is because they're about our future. But if it weren't for all of the great staff that we have, from central office down to every teacher and custodian and every building that we that we have our children in, we wouldn't be successful. So, I would be remiss not to thank Jenny Dean in particular. That was fabulous, Dr. Jones. Thank you so much to you and your staff for such a a great recognition. And the song was fabulous, you know, results equal, you know, from the vision. But I want everyone to know that, yes, we have to have a vision to go forward, but that vision is in our strategic plan, and that strategic plan was put together three years ago, three and a half years ago, but not by us. It was put together by staff, by parents, by students, by community members, working really hard for several months to help give us the vision to take the school division in the direction that was seen that it needed to go, and we've made such great strides. And I'm so very proud to be part of this community and to serve this community in this role. So, thank you again to everybody, and I'll let you carry it home.
Thank you. I had a lot to say, but well, Mr. Williams took all of my time, so, and he did it better than I could have anyway. Thank you, everybody, for for being here, for the students earlier. Again, it it touched my heart, and I know it touched everybody else's heart, just to watch our children, and it was wonderful. Mr. Wolf is here from City Council, we appreciate that, and some lady with long hair, I think that might be Ilka Chavez. Thank you for being here. Okay, we will go on to citizens' comments. At this time, we welcome citizens who wish to speak about services, policies, and affairs of the City of Manassas Public Schools. Because we have an agenda we need to complete, we ask that comments be limited to three minutes, and I'll explain that in a moment. We appreciate the time you have taken to be here. We treat citizens' comments as a public hearing, and we do not engage in conversation with speakers. The lack of an immediate response to your comments should not be taken as a lack of interest or concern. Please note that matters that are properly the subject of closed meetings, such as those related to the performance of school personnel or individual students' concerns, may not be discussed during this time. By that, what we mean is no personnel or students' names are to be used. We do that to protect our staff. A lot of people want to get positive comments, and that's great, but if we allow that, we also have to allow negative comments, and we won't allow that to happen to our staff. Mr. Wolf was part of getting us all this new-fangled stuff up here, and so I will no longer be timing on my phone. Ms. Miller will be timing, and when you're speaking, you will see a green light above the bar there, and when it goes to yellow, that means you have 30 seconds left, and when it goes to red, that means you're done. And over the next few weeks, with budget and redistricting and all of these things going on, I believe we're going to have a lot of speakers, and so I'm going to do my very best to be kind and nice and make you stop at three minutes, and I'll do that in the nicest way I can. So, okay. And I've got two people that have signed in already. If there are anybody that would like to speak who has not signed in, I'm going to ask that you make your way down that aisle on that end, and Mr. Hawkins will help you sign in before you speak, and you can do that while others are speaking. Right now, I have Rebecca Warner, is it?
Weiner.
Weiner? You're up, ma'am. Your three minutes started.
This is my first time at a school board meeting, and I I go, my kids go to Round Elementary.
Can you lift the microphone up?
Yep.
And now, your time just started, so you're in good shape.
Okay, thank you. My kids go to Round Elementary. I have a fourth grader, a second grader, and a kindergarten. I love Round Elementary. I'm proud to say that my kids go to a city school, and I don't care what other district I'm talking to and what other states and what other surrounding county, I'm proud to say that my kids go to Round Elementary. I'm proud of the work that the city does to move us forward. And listening to the meeting for redistricting yesterday, it was clear that there are issues that need to be addressed. I appreciate the hard work and the proactiveness that is going into giving us a legitimate way of solving these issues. However, they affect me personally, and while I've had a positive experience in Round, my kids have thrived in Round through various, through every single bit of staff that we've had. There's been a lot of transitions. We've started with Mr. Durco, and he retired. We've had a new principal and a new vice principal come in, and they did a great job for two years. They've moved on to other things. We have a new principal and a new vice principal. Very proud to see the work that they have done. I'm excited to be involved, parents, and watch that continue forward. I was devastated yesterday to find out that after all those transitions, we are transitioning out of that school, and it has nothing to do about the school that we're going to. I am excited, I've heard great things about that school, but my kids have had a lot of transitions. And while this, I know as the needs are being met, you are asking my kids to transition to the old Baldwin for one year, and then transition to the new Baldwin for one year. And it may seem like the same building, it may seem like one transition, but it's two transitions. They'll have to learn the hallway, they'll have to learn where the office is, they'll have to find out where the bathrooms are, and they'll have to make that transition while they're trying to figure out their peers and moving over. It's a lot to ask of my kids, and it's a lot to ask of me, because we are family, we've been trying to get involved. My husband has been involved in the leadership in Cub Scouts as soon as we could. He's had various roles within Cub Scouts. He loves it. He is, he talks to the principal, you know, like, there's a dynamic that has been there that will shift and change in Girl Scouts. I drive my kids to the before-school clubs and the after-school clubs. My kids are involved in not just with their teachers, but with the librarian who runs an after-school program, or with the computer teacher who will be teaching them, makes their computer with, learning Minecraft coding. There's other dynamics of the school that my kids are connected to, that we are connected to, that you're asking us to move. Also, while you are considering transportation needs, and one of the things that were brought up to the meeting was left-hand turns and busy intersections, I would also ask that you consider sidewalks, because, oh, no, oh, no, the sidewalks, I can't walk to Baldwin. There's no direct ways from Winter Set Community to get to Baldwin. I have to go all the way around the sidewalks and more, but that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Is it Ariel Castillo? My, someone signed up, lives on Bragg. Okay. And we've got nobody else come down, so there's no one else to speak? So, I went through that whole thing for pretty much nothing? Okay, guys.
You let someone speak.
Yeah, but she knew what she was doing. I meant coming down here. Okay, we will move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'm reading that the school board of the City of Manassas approved the consent agenda as modified.
Second. motion by Mrs. Sebeski, second by Mr. Williams, is to approve the consent agenda as modified. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Student achievement and accountability, advanced ed reaccreditation. Mr. Lyon.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, honorable members of the board. Tonight, I'm here to brief you on the process we'll be going through over the next 12 months for reaccreditation with the Vansted. Vansted is a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization that goes around and accredits public and private educational institutions. It's kind of the gold standard, gold standard for the third-party accreditation. Manassas City Public Schools is currently accredited, and our current accreditation expires in June of 2017. The process over the next 12 months, kind of visually represented here, will go in phases. This spring, our central office of school will have committees getting together. We're going to be disseminating a parent, staff, and student survey sometime right after spring break to gather input from our stakeholders. We will be conducting a self-assessment, which looks at five standards and 33 indicators that Advanced Ed has put together, the research base, and vetted. We'll be collecting evidence and rating ourselves among those five standards. After that, we have to submit our student data, performance data in the fall, our school improvement plan, our continuous improvement plan processes in place, and summarize that in executive studies. We'll be going through peer reviews of each principal, and the central office will be reviewing all of each other's work, and then we'll present our final reports to our to our teams, parents, and everyone. In February of next year, we will have a visit from the external team of advanced ed experts coming in to look at our self-assessment and all of our data, and visit with teachers, students, parents, and board members next February, and they'll come out with their findings for our reaccreditation. But I just wanted to be here tonight to kind of give you a brief overview of that, because that will be happening over the next 12 months. I have a timeline in here, you can see, I'm not going into detail, but it kind of shows exactly what our teams will be doing over the next 12 months to prepare for that visit. And that, I already embedded the next steps in my presentation, I don't need to read through that slide, but that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions? Mrs. Sebeski.
Mr. Chair, um, there we go. Thank you, Mr. Lyon. Could you tell us approximately how many school divisions are accredited by Vansted?
That's a great question. I'll have to get the information for you out the top of my head, I do not know the total number. I do know that Prince William is-
Approximately. I mean, is is every school division accredited?
No, not every school division is accredited.
Of the process you have to go for it through, right?
Right, because of the rigorous process you have to go through, not every school division does this. Our neighboring school divisions go go through the processes. Fairfax County accreditates, credits their high schools, but not their system. I believe Prince William County does a system accreditation, we're doing a system accreditation. Not every school system in the state of Virginia does it, because it is a rigorous process. It's based around looking at your continuous improvement procedures and practices, has a higher, has a higher priority and the focus of how you do your business. I mean, outcomes are important, but they really look at how do you work as a system to continuously improve yourself throughout the year.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Lyon.
Thank you.
Student Administrative Support Services, pre-K 6 redistricting presentation and update. Mr. App.
Good evening, Chairman, Chairman de Maria, members of the board, Dr. McGwark. This evening, myself along with Mr. Hjajzy from City Gate GIS, who's present, will present to you an update on the redistricting, and also many members still in the audience are part of the redistricting committee, and I'll be introducing them during this presentation. So, some background information before we get into the whole redistricting. We've sort of taken a lot of the information from last night and developed this presentation. As a reminder, ideally, what would have happened is we would have had both of our community engagements, but the snow hit us, so we've had one, and we'll have the 5 through 6 one tomorrow. But the first phase, really, to to begin this, was the building of the new Baldwin Elementary and Intermediate, and as you can see, it's alive and well and on time, and we're excited for that opening in January of 17. Phase 2 is where we are now, where we're redistricting and planning for the future. And we, just to kind of go back, we contracted with City Gate GIS back on April 8, 2015, so it's going up on about 10 months now. And in that study, it was three components, elementary and intermediate grade reconfiguration, along with the 2020-2030 school division facility study, and that is just about complete. We have the draft from Mr. Hjajzy, and Mr. Hilton and I are reviewing that, and very soon, you guys will have that report. And then, leading into the last phase of our contract with City Gate is the elementary and intermediate school redistricting. It's important to note to the school board and to our listening audience that this is a phase-in, that the proposal for the redistricting is that pre-K through grade 4 would begin in August of 2016, grade 5 would begin in August of 17, and grade 6 will begin in August of 2018. Also, another thing that's important to to note, and with phase 3, is while we are redistricting, we'll be up for that again in 2022 with the proposed new Dean Intermediate and Mayfield Intermediate that will house grades 4 and 6. That will then place us into a school division with four elementary schools that will be K 3, because our proposal is that the pre-K center will go at the current Baldwin Intermediate School. So, there will be K through 6 redistricting at that time. So, to review the redistricting goals, the redistricting goals are to balance attendance areas with school capacities. Currently, we are strained at one specific school, where five out of six of our fourth grade classes are in trailers, that would be Weems Elementary, and some of our other schools are well under capacity. We want to account for future growth, and that future growth is in the report from City Gate when they did the school capacities and school and room, student enrollment. The goal is to keep neighborhoods together, and as I mentioned last night, some of our neighborhoods are quite large, so they are potentially proposed to be split among more than- than one school like they are in some school now. Student transportation efficiency. In a minute, I'm going to show you the proposed and the current boundaries and share some information there. Last night and with our parents, we're trying to create a transparent and open process and include the community input. We received a lot of input last night. We're gathering that input, and we are also opening up a site that you'll see in a minute on how our community can continue to give us input through April the 11th. As I mentioned earlier, another goal is to eliminate the trailers, specifically as homerooms at Weems Elementary. And we'd like to try to balance our free reduced lunch percentage at all of our schools and balance those between eight and 10% of one another. So the redistricting process. Phase one was the redistricting with internal staff. The internal staff included the principals from all elementary schools, Mayfield Intermediate, myself, the acting director of transportation, and the superintendent. And once, and Mr. Hjajzy, of course. And once we really worked on a proposed redistricting plan, we asked a parent representative, have given a lot of time already and will continue to help us in this, and that was phase two. Last night and tomorrow night, we'll begin phase three with our public engagements and comments. Between, starting tomorrow and going to April the 11th, we will be looking at the comments, finalizing the plan, and the goal is to bring back for final approval to the school board on April the 12th and then do a public rollout, as I showed earlier, with the K four beginning in August of 2016. Am I driving or you driving? I can drive. Okay. So I would like to take a moment to recognize some of the committee members that are still here. Our assistant principal, who has been at a couple meetings for Dr. Ashley Cramp, is here tonight. Stacy Armstrong. So Stacy, if you'll stand and just be recognized. And the parent, I think she's still here, Beverly Kamara. No, I thought, sorry, in the back corner, but she maybe had to leave. Jenny Dean, Dr. Zella Jones, who I know is here. And Erica Stein, who is representing Jenny Dean. At Hayden, Dr. Amanda Wilder. And Mr. Nelson Apofanio. Did I say that correctly? Thank you. At Round Elementary, Mr. Baldwin and Ms. Kathy Macias. Weems Elementary, Mr. Rupert's not here, but I believe Ms. Gary that you saw earlier, along with Cassandra Wasson. Mayfield, Kara Mills and Chantel Skyler. Central Office, you know, Dr. McGurk, myself, and Mr. Joe Yan-Covia are acting transportation director. And then, of course, you have met Mr. Fred Hjajzy. So that is our committee moving from now and moving forward. So gonna start bringing a lot of numbers to you in these next few slides. A lot of this information was of value to us last night, some things that were great questions, and Dr. McGurk and I wrapped our heads around this today, and I wanted to provide this, not just to you, the board, but to the public as well. So in looking at this one, you have the current student count, student, current student count, the capacity, and the free reduced lunch percentages. So you see at Baldwin, our student count is at 757 with a capacity of 706. And I need to note that asterisk on the bottom, that is based on student addresses reported in Power School. That's not necessarily the school that they attend. We have transfers. We have students that are special need students that go to specific schools. So I want to make it clear that that's not the number of students at the schools, but it's the numbers that are in that attendance zone based on the map. So when you go across Dun-Baldwin, you'll see that by address, their free reduced lunch currently is 70%, and the free reduced current students that literally go there are 74%. And then you can see those other numbers of what the current free reduced lunch percentages So elementary students moving under the current redistricting proposal to date. In pre-K through four, our student population, based on their current addresses, are 3,289 students. The student, there was a lot of questions last night about student transfers and how are we going to move forward with student transfers. They will be approved on space-available basis. And over there to the right in parentheses is the specific school board regulation, JN-R, that talks specifically to how that process takes place. So pre-K three-three students being redistrict is 786 students. Under the proposal, that's how many students would move from their current school to a new school. 76% stay at the current school, and 24% would move to a different school. Now, the next bullet has to do with the special education, specialized classes currently all located at Round and one at Jenny Dean. Last night, there were questions on this. This continues to be something that we're looking at very closely, and I want to emphasize what's in that parenthesis, that the final program location may change based on the needs of students and appropriate space. Today, in this presentation, we're proposing that two autism classes go to Hayden, two autisms, the two intellectually disabilities or IDs would remain at Round, and the three pre-K special education classrooms would remain at Jenny Dean. So proposed student count, capacity, and free reduced lunch. So what this, what this graphic is showing is that, again, I'm just going to use Baldwin as the front, and I can certainly go any, go through every school if you'd like me to, but just using the top school. Right now in the proposal, 667 students would begin at Baldwin, and the capacity of the new Baldwin is 706. You can see the free reduced lunches there going down are within the goal of eight to 10% with the lowest being at Hayden at 59% and the highest being at Jenny Dean at 67%. And then, again, at the very end, there was some questions today that came in, well, how many third graders are affected? So we grabbed the data. I am extremely confident in that data, that under the current proposal, 185 of the third grade students are proposed to move to a new school. So we wanted to share that because that came to us today as well. So another way of showing the students that are moving is where are they going to from each school? So if you look again, let's pick a different school. If we look at Hayden, you'll see that four students will move to Baldwin, 140 students would move to Jenny Dean, zero students to Round, and 38 students to Weems. And if you go across, you'll see that there's 250 total students that would move from Hayden as that example. And on the, on the blue chart at the very end is how many students are affected by So the current boundaries. So the current boundaries is something that I really wish we showed this last night. Hindsight's 2020. However, this now is going to be on the website so that, it was very confusing last night with the current and proposed all clumped on one map. So we're living and we're learning, and this is the proposed map. One thing I want to just, and I'm going to drive here for a minute, Ms. Miller, but one thing that I want to point out is when we look at the current boundaries, and I used this as an example last night, where I'm, where I'm going up with the cursor here in the light blue, that is our current Jenny Dean boundary. Yes, this is the airport, and there aren't students there, but there is discussion with our city of beginning to build here over near the DMV. Can't think of the name of the road right now. I should know that. But there is a proposal for that potentially to be built. So what we were struggling with is how long the transportation is and a lot of things they have to do to get back to Jenny Dean under the current one. And then you will see up here is Hayden's current attendance area, Weems' attendance area. Might look small, but it's very crowded. A lot of that is Point of Woods. We have a lot of students there, so I don't want our community or the school board, I know you know this school board, while it's small, it still is our most overcrowded school. And then over here is Round Elementary. I'm sorry, Round Elementary here, and up here is Baldwin Elementary. So that is the current capacity. I mean, the current boundaries. So what we'd like to, what I'd like to do now is bring up Mr. Hjajzy, who is going to show a audio, and he's gonna, a video, and he's going to be the audio, on how we came to where we are now and how we did the work and how we utilize the software. So, Mr. Hjajzy?
Good evening. Thank you.
Good evening.
So click to start, I guess?
I think, I think Mrs. Miller's going to bring it up.
Can you let go of the mouse for just a second?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, we're both, we're fighting for the mouse.
And it's actually-
Okay. It's all right.
I can click?
Yes, sir.
Oh, all right. Thank you. So I guess the, the purpose of showing this is to-
It's off my-
Yeah, I haven't started yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The purpose of showing this is to share with you the technology, a little bit about the technology that we used to get the process done. It was a web application which allowed the individuals who were participating in the redistricting process to not just work on the plan during the sessions, but also be able to work on it at home when they had more time to think about it and, and look at things with more detail. The way the application works, I'm going to actually kind of click it, it's fairly simple to, simple to use. You can create any number of alternatives. At the top, there's a map that shows the boundaries as they are. On the bottom, we show the capacity next to all the schools. We also showed the totals by grade as well as the total number of students and the percentage of free and reduced lunch that was calculated as the boundaries were adjusted. So this works a lot like Google Maps with the school district laid on top of it. The small units of geography that you see were actually created between myself and the former head of transportation, and they're supposed to represent neighborhoods that we did not want to break. We constructed them by aggregating individual parcels together. So we looked at the city parcels, and we drew the boundaries around them. And we actually took some care in doing that, and as you can see, I'm going to try to stop it here. The house that's, the red arrow is pointing is actually coming, it comes out on the street on the northwest side, so we included it in the block up there as opposed to including it with the subdivision that was down here. So we wanted to make sure, we looked at these things very carefully, and we draw the line sort of going even on the back of the houses to make sure that two sides of a street would end up being in the same district where it made sense. So the next thing that's going to happen is I'm just going to select an area for assignment, and you can see when I select it, it shows the number of students in that area, the free and reduced lunch. And as I, as you click more, it adds more kids to that selected area. And then I select the school that I want to assign it to, and when I click assign, the areas, the color changes, and the numbers are recalculated. And I'm just going to reverse the process and put it back in the lighter blue area and, again, recalculate it. So basically, this was the process that we used, and we went through many iterations of this. And at each meeting, different individuals would come back with ideas, how to change things to improve both the numbers as well as the configuration of the districts to make them either more neighborhood-oriented or to avoid splitting neighborhoods or to create boundaries that followed major roads, which is, which was one of the goals. We wanted to make sure that you don't have kids that have to cross a major, major roadway. So most of the boundaries here are actually along major roads. Any questions before I step off?
Just don't leave.
No, I'm just going to sit.
I know.
Okay.
So the proposed boundaries. The proposed boundaries, and I'm going to drive here again, Mrs. Miller. So the proposed boundaries, you can see that while we don't have it side-by-side for this presentation, you can see that this area here is now Round Elementary. It seemed to make sense to the committee that when there's building, that will occur at some point that the city's talking about, that it would make sense that they would attend Round opposed to go all the way over to Jenny Dean. If you look up in this area, this little block right here that was Weems is proposed to go to Hayden. And then there's some other areas within here that the changes are made. This area along Centerville Road, the trailer park that is currently going to Jenny Dean would now go to Weems under this proposal. Those are the three major areas. And then Georgetown South, right now, our Georgetown South boundaries go to three of our elementary schools, and under the new proposal, it would go to two elementary schools. So tomorrow, we'll spend more time talking about the proposed boundaries for the intermediate. This is a little easier on the eyes, if you will, because we only have two colors, and we'll have two intermediates starting in August of 17, August of 18. 17. Sorry, it gets confusing sometime. But you will see that the schools that are affected in this proposed change is Baldwin's attendance zone and Round's attendance zone. So if we go to the next slide, and it'll show a little bit here in a second, and I'll get back to that, but this, this slide is representing the proposed students, and that our student count at Mayfield would be 936, their capacity is 1104, and Baldwin's capacity is 300, and there'd be 286 students there. I'd like to point out that the board made the right decision because if you look at the vision total for five-six at 1222, the capacity is 1104 if we did nothing and didn't have a second intermediate. So it's, those numbers are very true in that this was necessary. The free reduced lunch under the proposal was within 1%, and again, this is according to the students where they, where they reside. So what does that mean in regards to Round and Baldwin? Under the proposed plan, 162 students in grades two and three, where they reside now, would remain at Baldwin, but 79 of those students would go to Mayfield. Just to comment on that, where the geographical locations of Baldwin and Mayfield, right now, there are students that go to Mayfield that live in the Baldwin attendance area that walk to Mayfield. Under this proposal, those students would remain at, would remain at Baldwin and not go to Mayfield, the Battery Heights, the Signal Hill Road. So that's, that's, that's where a lot of those 79 students are represented that would remain at Mayfield and not stay at Baldwin Intermediate. Then Round Elementary School, because it's a larger school than it is now when the redistricting, if it's approved, 124 students would go to Baldwin, 138 would go to Mayfield. And I'm going to bring Mr. Hjajzy up now, but before I do so, this is, this is the tool that Mr. Hjajzy is going to explain. And this went live today with Elementary, and it'll go live with Intermediate on Thursday, where parents, community can provide input, questions, comments to this. So I'll, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hjajzy, who will explain how they, how they utilize this software to give us input.
Thank you. So the last piece of software was really available to the members of the redistricting committee. This is the software tool that we use to engage with the community and be able to take input. The goal was to create something that was easy to use. We used Google Maps as the backdrop. Figured most people are familiar with that. And when they, they get access to this through the school district's website. So this comes up, and I'm going to go ahead and click start so we can actually see how the, the process works. When you move the mouse around on the schools, it'll actually tell you what the school names are in case you're not familiar with the- are, in case you're not familiar with the other schools. The zooming and zoom out works, as I said, very similar to Google Maps because it's based on that. You have the option of viewing the map, or you can look at it under a satellite view. And again, you can zoom all the way in and essentially do everything you do on Google If you're interested in locating an address, there's a place on the top where you can For somebody that works in computers, you would think I would type faster, but. So it finds, it locates the address, puts a pin on it so you can actually see where the, which district the address falls in. And if you want to place a comment, you click the add comment button. It tells you to place the marker on the map and place your, where you'd like your comment to appear. You get a form to fill out, where you can express an opinion on the top, you can provide The email address is required because after you're done with this step, the system will send you an email so you can verify that you're, in fact, the individual who submitted this comment. We wanted to make sure that one person doesn't put 200 comments. It's just a note saying that you may check your email, it may go to your spam folder, just make sure. The comment appears as unapproved, so you can see a little question mark there showing, that's my comment, and then I receive an email with a link at the bottom, and it provides me the information about what I typed in that form. I click it, my comment has now been recorded. If I want to go back to the map, I can see that there is a comment. The way the application is designed, everybody can see that there is a comment placed at a location. However, they can't see the comments because those are not necessarily public. Any questions?
Any questions on that? We're rolling.
All right.
Don't freeze up on us now, okay?
Roll one.
So important dates, and this is close to the conclusion of our presentation. So as a reminder, last night, we had our pre-K through four, our community engagement presentation. There's our formal presentation to the board this evening, and tomorrow, we'll engage in our community for grades five, six. The next big piece that I had mentioned earlier is that the software that Mr. Hjajzi just showed will be open beginning the 25th for both, all the way through April the 11th. They'll go to our website, and there's a link there, and they can go to either or or both to provide comments that they'd like to share. As a reminder, there will be a public hearing on the 29th and the 30th. I believe the 29th is a public hearing, and it's the same night as a school board meeting, so that will be during pre-K through four. And then the following evening will be a special meeting to have a public hearing on the 30th. I hope I have those right. I think it's, I think pre-K four is the board meeting, and the 30th is a special meeting for just five, six, both here at City Hall. As I mentioned earlier, we'll bring that back to the board for approval on April the 12th. I had mentioned again, but I think it's important to repeat it, that the proposal presented for approval would be pre-K four, would begin in August of 16, grade five, August of 17, and grade six, August of 18. The purpose for April, to bring that back, is it's important that we do have time before the year ends and people begin their summer vacation plans so that we can publicize the revised boundaries. One big thing that came up with our parents in our, on our committee, was, well, what if we transfer, what if we're on the transfer list? How do we get a chance to see our new school? Because they know their elementary school. So we will have open houses for all of our elementary schools for those parents and students that are being transferred to a new school. And I believe that concludes our presentation, and Mr. Hjajzi and I are here to answer any questions.
We'll go back one slide.
Sure.
I think March 29th is just a public hearing.
Is that Monday, is that a?
It's a Tuesday, but it's an off Tuesday, it's the fifth Tuesday.
Oh, okay, so it's not a board meeting.
I don't think there'll be a school board meeting that night.
So they're both special.
Am I correct?
After spring break, it's during our normal time. So I believe it is a board meeting.
Oh, so the 22nd is not?
Yeah, because it's spring break.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so I should go on the 22nd and delete that meeting?
It's probably a good idea.
Okay. If I show up here and nobody else is here?
It's not personal.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments on this? Anyone? You guys good? I got something. I want to thank everybody that worked on this. There's a reason we haven't done this since 1990.
Yes, sir.
I think it's probably because it's difficult. And if I look at our current map, probably should have been done before, but it was just easier to go with the flow. We'll hear about it now, and we will take every comment seriously and see what can be done about it. But you all did a lot of hard work, and I appreciate those of you on staff that have done that, and I really, really appreciate the volunteers that have done that. This is not easy, and you volunteered to do work that is just about the hardest thing there is to do in a school system. There's a couple other things, but, and I really, really appreciate the input from the parents and the community members that took time to do this.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate it. Can, if there's nothing else? Well, and like on the calendar, tomorrow night is the next five, six redistricting. And can I get a motion for closed session?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas enter closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by section 2.2-3711, part A, paragraph one of the Code of Virginia 1950 is amended for the following purpose. Section 2.2-3711, part A, paragraph one, discussion of personnel matters, personnel number 1516-1152 and other personnel matters.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Porty, second by Mrs. Sebesky. Is there, that the school board of the city of Manassas enter closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by section 2.2-3711, part A, paragraph one of the Code of Virginia 1950 is amended for the following purpose. Discussion of personnel matters, personnel P E R S 1516-1152 and other personnel matters. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie's five, zero. Thank you all for being here, we appreciate it.